I'm Jessica Ainsley, Mayor of North Bend, and I want to say thank you so much for coming here tonight and being part of this town hall. It's a very important topic to discuss this evening. I know many people in this room have experienced homelessness at some level, whether it was you personally, somebody in your family, or just even in the community, people that you see on the streets, in front of your house. And so we're here to talk about that. Me, myself, I too have experienced it all at some level. And so I want to let you know that I understand, and I do understand the frustration that has brought a lot of people. So tonight, I do want to make a few points that we are here today to discuss several things. One of those things we're going to talk about, how we got here, and what are the laws that are coming into play that are putting us in a position that we need to develop ordinance? So we're going to discuss how we got here, where we're at now, and where we need to be with, again, the new laws that are coming to take July 1st. So I'm going to go ahead and pass over here to the city administrator for a moment. I think we're going to go ahead and look at the agenda and go over some details, and then I'll introduce your topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm David Milligan, I'm the city administrator here in North Bend.
So with our introductions, we're going to also go over the ground rules for a successful town hall style meeting. We're going to be addressing homelessness in public places and have a brief synopsis of the law. We'll talk about our mission, the time, place, and manner, what the next steps are after the town hall, because we'll be having a follow-up town hall after we gather some information tonight and we develop in a draft ordinance. And so we'll be meeting again on March 6th. We also have some information to share with you about some parallel initiatives that are already in play. We'll have public comment tonight, so if you haven't already, please sign up for the public comment period. We'd like to hear from you. And then they'll have our wrap and adjournments.
All right. I mentioned that there is the polls and the interactive. We're going to start with this first one. So if you do have your smartphones out and you want to go to menji.com, again, you've got the code in front of you, it's on the sheet. But if you would go to menji.com, use 717135M, and there's a question that we would like you to answer. All right, we've got sixty entries. This gives you an idea of what one word comes to mind when talking about homelessness, houseless, or unhoused in North Bend. So this is what's called a word. And so the largest word you see is sad. And then it starts to go into gradations based on what you are experiencing. So if your word is used multiple times, that depends on the number of words that you've used most often. One word was sad. You see crying frustration, you see garbage. And then you get into other areas, uninformed, deep problem, difficult, drugs, needing law assistance. And so we appreciate that. All of this information is gathered, and we will share it back to you.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go ahead, and again, we have Patty Mulvihull, who is the executive director of the League of Oregon Cities. And she's here to talk to us about a brief synopsis of the law, the law in regulating public property. Again, Patty's executive director, she's also an attorney by trade. And I'm going to go ahead and pass the mic here to you.
Thank you all for hosting me briefly. This is going to be terrible, by the way. When I present, I usually walk about 4,000 steps, so I apologize in advance. I don't presume that any of you actually have ever heard of the League of Oregon Cities. Is that a fair assessment? Lots of people shaking their heads, yes. So the League of Oregon Cities is actually, we are a sub-department of all 241 cities in Oregon. So we're like a plain department, a police department. We are a department essentially of North Bend, Coos Bay, Myrtle Creek, Portland, Salem, Uniontown. And we have three primary missions. The first is that we lobby on your behalf as the state and federal legislators. So we ask for you to get the money that we need. We lobby against free answers that related. We impact you as residents and business owners in your city. That's one of the number-one things you do. The second thing that we do is we provide educational resources for city officials, whether they're elected officials or city staff. And the third thing we do is develop best practices. And that's kind of why I am here today. So prior to becoming the executive director, I was the organization's general counsel. I've been a municipal attorney for 20 years. I've only ever worked in city government or county government. That's 20 years in my background. And when a lot of courts, so the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals started issuing decisions about how local units of government could regulate public property that they own when it comes to people who are homeless, that was one of the issues I was asked to tackle. And what we did, once those court decisions and some state statutes started happening, was we convened a work group of about 20 attorneys in the state, all of whom specialize in working for local governments, to create some best practices. To take all of those legal issues that have come our way and condense them into an understandable and usable format so that cities and counties would know what they need to do in order to comply with these new laws. So I'm not going to take a position, I have no position either as a league on what North Bend does in terms of how it regulates its public spaces. That's for each community to decide. What I'm going to try and do is take what's happening from the federal court system, from state laws, the state legislature, and break them down so that you understand what you are legally required to do and what we are legally prohibited from doing. I don't have a solution for homelessness. Whoever finds that solution is going to be an incredibly wealthy person. All I can talk to you about is what your city government can and cannot do in relation to how it regulates its public spaces in regards to people who are homeless. If you have questions, please raise your hand. If I get too lawyerly, which I try really hard not to do, please yell at me and tell me I'm speaking lawyer talk. It will be fair. So we've got three types of laws. So understanding how your city can regulate its public spaces, whether that's its sidewalks, its streets, its parks, its plazas, its trail systems, what have you, there are three different types of laws that you have to read together. You have to read federal law. That's the preeminent law that we must comply with. Then we have to read two specific state laws that are currently in place. And then we need to look at the local law. So we've got to read all three of those together to figure out what we can or cannot do. She says left, right? Okay, so we're going to start with the federal law. There are three things that we need to worry about from the federal law perspective. The first is the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution. The second is a decision from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, known as Martin v. Boise. And the third is a second opinion from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. I have it up here as Blake v. Grants Pass. Sometimes you will hear it referred to as Johnson v. Grants Pass. There was multiple people who filed suit against the city of Grants Pass. Blake was what we would call the lead petitioner. She has since passed away, so the court has renamed the case to the second petitioner in that case. So if you hear Johnson v. Grants Pass, it's the same thing as Blake v. Grants Pass. We have to read these three things together. Okay. How many of you have ever heard about the Eighth Amendment before people started talking about homelessness? It didn't get a whole lot of play, right? We more often talk about the First Amendment, free speech, Second Amendment, the right to bear arms, the Fourth Amendment, due process. The Eighth Amendment has not been well discussed in what I would call general normalcy. What it essentially does is it says that governmental entities cannot impose what is called a cruel and unusual punishment. And back in the late 1960s, the United States Supreme Court issued an opinion that essentially says it is cruel and unusual punishment for a government to punish somebody for a status or condition they cannot control. That case was essentially dealing with the case of an alcoholic. And what had happened was there was a Texas statute that had criminalized being an alcoholic. Just simply being an alcoholic was criminal. What the Supreme Court said was, you can certainly punish somebody for being intoxicated in public. You can punish somebody for driving intoxicated, but you cannot punish them for being an alcoholic. That would be penalizing them for their status. Okay, so that's what it essentially meant from the Supreme Court's perspective, to punish somebody under the Eighth Amendment. So how does that relate to homelessness? Sorry, I shortened this so I wouldn't give an hour presentation. So in Ninth Circuit, 2019, issued a decision called Martin v. Boise. The city of Boise had a fairly common camping ordinance. Okay, Boise, I know. What Boise's ordinance said was that it was illegal, basically, for people to sit, sleep, or lie on public property. Okay, you couldn't sit, you couldn't sleep, and you couldn't lie. And police officers would regularly cite and arrest homeless people because they were sitting, sleeping in line on public streets, on public sidewalks, and in public parks. Many of those people who were experiencing homelessness filed suit against the city of Boise, and it went up to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And what the Ninth Circuit has said is that you cannot punish somebody because they have nowhere else to go. So if you think about it from a purely scientific standpoint, the human body has to rest. At some point, biology dictates that we must sit, that we must sleep, that we must lie. That is the unanticipated accident of being a human being. The body must rest. And so what the Ninth Circuit said was that a homeless person has nowhere else to go. If there is no shelter, if there is no bed, if they have no home, the government cannot penalize that person for doing a normal bodily act of sitting, sleeping, or lying. You don't have to agree with it, I just want to make sure it makes sense. Okay? So what we know after the Martin decision is that governments cannot criminalize the behavior of sitting, sleeping, or lying if the person who is doing that is homeless and has nowhere else to go, because they have no choice. The court also said that cities and counties and special districts, we don't have to build homeless shelters. So there's not an affirmative thing saying the city of North Bend has to build a homeless shelter. We know that we can impose what are called reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So that's lawyer speak. And what that essentially means is the court has said that while cities cannot punish somebody for sitting, sleeping, or lying if they have nowhere else to go, we can draft ordinances that dictate the time when people are allowed to sit, sleep, and lie. We can pass ordinances that dictate where they sit, sleep, and lie, and how they sit, sleep, and lie. As long as they're reasonable, you can do that. Okay? We know, unfortunately, we had hoped that it was a misstatement, but it doesn't seem to be that way, that this is relevant for your city limits. So what that I mean is, I don't live in North Bend, but I've spent enough time here. I will be honest, it's hard for me to tell when I cross into Coos Bay. I hope that's not offensive. Okay? What this court decision seems to say is that, let's say, North Bend and Coos Bay got together and pooled resources, and y'all decided that you were going to pool your resources, but there was going to be a homeless shelter, and it was going to be located in Coos Bay. North Bend was going to help fund it and staff it, but the actual shelter site itself was located in Coos Bay. What this court decision says, seemingly, is that if there is somebody in North Bend who is homeless and has nowhere else to go inside of North Bend, then they cannot be punished for sitting, sleeping, or lying in a public space inside of North Bend, even though that jurisdictional limit is really difficult, if not impossible, to actually see. Okay? That was the first court case that came out in 2019. What just happened is Grants Pass, so over there in southern Oregon off the I-5 corridor, Grants Pass was trying to comply with the Boise decision, and they had updated their ordinance. Several individuals in that city who are homeless filed suit alleging that their ordinance did not go far enough and that it was not consistent with the Boise decision. That decision, that court decision, went up to the Ninth Circuit, and we had a new ruling about four months ago, so it's only about a four-month-old decision. We were hoping it would clarify some of the unknown issues from the Boise decision. We were hoping it would overturn Boise, and it did not. What the Ninth Circuit said in the new case, Blake, is that not only can you not arrest somebody for sitting, sleeping, or lying, you can't issue a fine. You basically can't punish anybody in any way, shape, or form if they have nowhere else to go. It also said that in addition to sitting, sleeping, or lying, homeless residents need to be permitted an opportunity to take rudimentary protections against the elements. So if it's 20 degrees below zero and they need a sleeping bag or some type of cover to protect them from the cold so they don't die of hypothermia, you have to allow them to do so. The third thing that Blake did was it clarified what people consider to be true in actual access to a shelter bed. So by that I mean, it's fairly common for a lot of shelters to have restrictions on them. Right? So some shelters will have religious restrictions. If you're going to have access to the shelter bed, you have to be willing to go to Bible study. Or you have to be willing to go to synagogue once a week. Some shelters have time limits. So you can only access the bed for 30 days, and then you're out. Some have barriers to entry. They only take women, they only take men, they don't take pets, they don't take families, they don't take you if you're intoxicated. They have some type of barrier. And what the court has said is that in order to say that somebody has access to a bed, they actually have to have access to a bed. So I'm not picking on you, but you're the first person I made eye contact. So we're going to pretend that you're somebody who's homeless, and I'm going to pretend that I'm a law enforcement officer as I break your equipment. So I'm a cop, you're a homeless person, and I come up and you say, "I have nowhere else to go. That's why I'm sleeping on the street." And I call the shelter and I say, "Do we have any beds?" And they say, "Yes, that's not enough." I have to know if they have a bed for you. Is it a Christian facility and you're Muslim? Then there's not actually a bed for you. Is it a facility that you've already stayed at for 30 days? So they won't take you. So it's not enough to just have enough beds in the city. You have to have a bed for the particular person, yes.
Can't we just designate like a park for them to go sleep at?
Yes.
You know, instead of in front of businesses and...
Yes.
You know? And then they can't say they have nowhere to go, right?
Yes, so we'll get there, I promise. But you're correct. This court, for the first time, did talk about car camping. It seems to assert that car camping could be a form of somebody taking a rudimentary precaution from the weather. Right? In other words, it could provide them some cover, and it reinforced the city limits again. Right? So it's the city limit issue. So they have to have a bed available to them in the city they're presently staying in. That's what I know. The really difficult part about these court decisions is there's a lot we don't know. And the best way I know how to explain this is, I've got two court decisions. That's it. There's a whole bunch of uniformed law enforcement officers, and I'm assuming the branch here is the sheriff's deputy? All right. Okay. If I polled all of them and I said, "Can you give me a list of 10 or 15 examples of things that might be considered an unreasonable search?" They could put their heads together and probably come up with examples. If I asked them, "Hey, can you give me 10 examples of what would be an illegal use of force, like we've gone too far?", they could do it. And part of the reason they could do it is we've got 80 years' worth of court cases. They can go back and look at 80 years' worth of court decisions that have different facts. Court said this was okay, that wasn't. Another court said this was okay, that's not. I've got two cases here, and the fact patterns are virtually identical. So we don't have a whole lot of information as lawyers to give you clarity. Let me finish this statement, then I'll see you. So the things that I told you I know leave a lot of unanswered questions that we don't know. So the first thing is, remember at the beginning I told you that one of the reasons this is considered potentially a violation of the Eighth Amendment is because the body has to sit. It has to sleep. It has to lie. Well, are there other involuntary acts of being human that we all must do? Everybody giggles when I say that, right? But at some point, we may have to eliminate waste from our body. Right? What I don't know is if you can no longer prohibit that from happening in public spaces. I don't know the answer to that. I will tell you that most attorneys are assuming that that type of conduct is still going to be found impermissible. But if you ask me if I was 100% sure, I'm going to have to tell you no, because we don't have the answer to that question yet. The second thing that we don't know is, remember I told you, you can identify what time of day somebody sits, sleeps, or lies. You can identify where, to your point, they sit, sleep, or lie. But they have to be reasonable. And I don't have any examples yet of what is a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. So let me give you an example that I was working with a city attorney of Bend on. It gets cold in Bend. It snows in Bend. Right? So the question is, having a time, place, or manner restriction that says, "Look, you can sit, sleep, and lie between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM", on its face, seems pretty reasonable. But what happens when 7:00 AM comes and it's 20 degrees below zero? And there's nothing open? Are you really going to say that it is objectively reasonable to make somebody tear down their tent and get out of a downed sleeping bag? Is that reasonable? I don't know. I would assume not. So that's the tricky part, right? I know that you can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. All attorneys do. What the attorneys are going to try and help you do and help your council do is figure out what are reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions for North Bend specifically. There is no model ordinance on this. There can't be. Because what happens in what works in North Bend may not work in Myrtle Creek. It may not work in Medford. It may not work in Bend. It may not work in Joseph. That's what we don't know there.
In North Bend, the police, when you leave your tent and go out there with a knife, cut up with a knife and leave their car on your tent.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
In North Bend, when I was homeless here, I left my tent two different times. All two different times, it was cut up with a knife, and a police officer's car was left on the tent.
Well, I'm...
No worries, I just put up...
No, okay.
...place and manner, you know, that's their manner. Handling things, just cutting up property, they'll... You got it, yeah.
So here's what I can tell you. My understanding of what the city council is attempting to do is impose what reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions will look like, which is part of the reason they want that type of feedback from you, sir, so they can use that as they create their policies. Let me finish this last one, and then I want to go to him, and I saw your hand. So the last one is that we don't know is what specific prohibitions cities can use to prohibit somebody from blocking what we call the right-of-way. Okay? So initially, we could kind of thought that you could reasonably prohibit people from erecting structures. Right? Because those tend to block the right-of-way. But now that cities need to make sure that people can take precautions so that they're not exposed to the elements, logically, that probably means there's some type of shelter, even if it's temporary, in certain weather conditions. That's probably something you should reasonably assume. But I would suggest that you can still have reasonable restrictions. So for example, engineers will talk about what we call line of sight. So, and those are usually around intersections. So it's probably reasonable to say you can't erect a structure in a public right-of-way that's adjacent to an intersection, because how can I see around it? Then we're going to create a hazard. It's probably reasonable to not allow people to actually pitch tents. I see your hand, I'll come to you third. In a street, right, in the middle of the street. That's obviously a safety accident. But we don't know which specific ones we can do yet. I thought you had a question, sir.
People have a problem with the homeless door around, like they'll stay in the doorway or something. You know, a business at night when it's closed, they're not really causing a problem. But they usually leave their garbage and a turd behind. And then, you know, like doing drugs in the post office now, if they're drug addicts, then that is just who they are. We're supposed to... They can shoot up in the park, they can smoke meth in the post office, you know? How far does this go?
So the behavior can be regulated. So you can still punish somebody for using illegal narcotics. You can still punish somebody who trespasses on private property. You can still prosecute somebody who damages public property. Those aren't off the table. Remember, all of this says isn't basic is that you can't punish somebody for the sitting, the sleeping, the lying, essentially keeping warm and dry if they have nowhere else to go. It doesn't talk about suddenly letting people break other laws that are still on the books. And I think your hand was next, sir.
So what I'm thinking is designate a park, one of the parks that nobody uses or who uses the less. Designate that park, they go there day and night, all day long, all night long. And camp, they make little camp spots where they can pitch their tents. That way, they can't be nowhere else saying they don't have nowhere to go. But they'll have a place to go, a park. You might have to put in sanda cans, maybe?
I think that's... So I think that's one of the options that you guys should share. What I can tell you from a legal perspective is that that is what a lot of cities are choosing to do in terms of their time, place, and manner, is identify particular locations within the community where individuals can camp. And then, I'm sorry, I don't know where, but I did see somebody on this side who had their hand up... Oh, in the back, sorry, sorry, I didn't see you.
The structures? They can't go structures blocking the sidewalks because that affects the ADA, the American with Disabilities Act.
There's a lawsuit pending from the city of Portland right now.
As long as you have them in the park, you don't even have to worry about that.
So hang on, I'm going to interrupt. Yeah. So there's a lawsuit pending against the city of Portland against a group of people have challenged that allowing people to block the sidewalk is a violation of the American with Disabilities Act. It's honestly a toss-up. I think it will probably be successful, but there's some competing interests at play, right? So you have the American with Disabilities Act arguably bumping up against the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. I don't think that one's going to get resolved anytime soon.
And then, just to get real quick on the city parks, some of the homeless are registered sex offenders and not allowed to be around children.
Yes.
Oh, children are commediate, so that was another factor.
Yeah. So there's different things to try and consider in how you're going to regulate this appropriately. So that was federal law. So if I'm going to... If somebody asks you, "What is the federal law..." Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand, sorry, it was a little low, sir.
Would it be possible to have a high profile people making comments submitted for both that area with difficulty? Absolutely.
Sure, yes. Yes. And I can try and repeat questions, too. Thank you for the reminder. You have your hand all the way up in the back.
So on my experience with... What he said, the city's standing right here. About the issues of like women, especially, we're allowing the fed homeless. I know the safety is a huge issue. So I would sleep at the same time that other people are sleeping because I have to take my safety into consideration. So I would find, I would replace it with, I can sleep, and it wasn't going to be inside of the resolution. Because I knew that if I fell asleep and someone else goes to sleep, or if I was in an area, even a shelter, I could figure myself into someone. So I mean, so these things, it doesn't sound like I'm asking you to take this into consideration.
So I'm going to repeat, summarize if I can. Her point was, if we're going to regulate, for example, the time, is it really set in stone? Because, for example, it may not be as safe for a woman Because, for example, it may not be as safe for a woman to sleep at the same time as men because of sexual assault. That's a great question. And honestly, that should be part of every city's equation, not just is it a safety issue? But not every person who's homeless is unemployed. And so, saying you can only sleep from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM when you have a homeless person who works a night shift is going to be problematic. So when you talk about regulating the time, to your point, you want to have all kinds of community conversations, which is why town halls like yours are happening across cities all over the Pacific Northwest for those kinds of points and comments, things that not everybody would've necessarily thought of. Thank you for raising that. Okay, so if you were gonna summarize what the United States Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said, what it essentially tells local governments is that they cannot punish a homeless person for sitting, for sleeping, for lying, or for taking protections to keep them warm and dry if that person has nowhere else to go inside their city limits. That's all it comes down to. You can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that regulate where that sitting, sleeping, lying, and keeping warm and dry happens, but those restrictions are gonna have to be reasonable and based on the circumstances in your own community. So, as if that wasn't complicated enough, we have state laws to worry about. We have two, and I promise I will actually explain these. You have, it's called House Bill 3115 and House Bill 3124. So 3115 essentially just puts those court decisions into state law. It essentially says that if a city or county is going to regulate sitting, lying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry on its held property, they have to have objectively reasonable circumstances as applied to even homeless people. So if you're going to regulate it, you have to have objectively reasonable standards. You don't have to regulate it at all. There are some cities in Oregon who are just choosing to say, we're not regulating people can sit, sleep, lie, and keep warm and dry wherever they want. My experience is that in communities that have a significant number of homeless residents, that's not a tenable solution. They need to identify some requirements in place, which is my guess part of the reason why you're having this town hall. One of the things the statute says is that if you are going to regulate sitting, sleeping, or lying on public property by persons who are experiencing homelessness, you have to have that regulation in place by July 1st. Now, the lawyer in me wants to tell you, if you don't, if you haven't already updated your ordinances, you could be in violation of federal law. But the state is essentially giving you an actual hard deadline you have to meet. I do expect the state to be enforcing this against cities who have not done it. Based on the tenor of the legislature, it would surprise me if they were not enforcing new regulations. Okay? Then you have House Bill 3124. This deals with the removal of what is called an established campsite. There is no definition of the word establish. Uh, I don't know why, but the state did not define what constitutes an established campsite. I don't know if it's been there for 24 hours, 72, a week, two weeks, there is no definition. The league is encouraging cities and counties, when they adopt ordinances to define establish, so they have some sense of when this requirement is gonna trigger. But if a city or county wants to remove an established campsite, they have to give notice, and they have to deal with the property they confiscate. So what does that mean? You have to give 72 hours of written notice before you remove that campsite. That notice has to be placed at every single entry point to the campsite. So if this room was an established campsite, and all of these doors were entry points into this campsite, we would have to have a written notice posted at every single entry point. Best practices from those who work most closely with homeless residents is that essentially those notices get posted every single day, that you give more than 72 hours notice when you can, and that if you have resources, like a social worker, that you take a social worker with you when you're posting the notices to try and help those residents find somewhere else to go. But under state law, at a minimum, you have to give 72 hours notice, and has to be posted at all campsites. There is an exception for an emergency. I've been working in government for 20 years, emergency is the most overused and misunderstood word that we talk about. Emergency means an emergency for health, safety, and life. If you can wait 72 hours and nobody was going to be harmed, you need to wait 72 hours. You can't do it on an emergency basis just because you're gonna have a bad news article the next day in the paper. Okay? So, oh, sorry, was there hands? Yes, sir.
You may have already covered this. So is this just on public property, or is this on private property as well?
Great.
Or does that mean you are?
Yeah, the question was, is this just on public property, or is it private property? Everything I'm talking about is only public property. This is only public property. Okay?
So great question. Do you wanna define public property, though?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Sidewalk in front of my house?
Yeah, so here's the thing. This particular statute, it didn't define public property, which isn't normally, seems like it should be a bad idea. But in Oregon, different statutes define public property differently. So what most of the municipal attorneys I've worked with have suggested is that if it's any property that your local government owns or has an interest in, you should consider that applicable. So your sidewalks, your parking lots, your plazas, your parks, your utility easements, anything you own and interest in, you should probably consider public property. Yes, sir?
Is this pretending that, uh, if they don't have nowhere else to go?
Yes.
You got it, you got a designated area? Does this scope comply?
Yeah, so his question is, is if, let's say, the city set up an established designated safe sleep zone, or safe camp zone, would this provision still apply? Sure, let's say you have a safe sleep zone, but something happens, and you realize that you have an environmental hazard, and you need to remove it so you can do cleanup, this would apply. You would still need to give 72 hours notice before you do that. What you have to also do is, historically, when governmental entities clean up or remove established campsites, they also have to deal with homeless residents' personal property. And you don't just wanna throw it away, so this statute gives you some specific parameters. So if the item has no value or utility, you can dis, I see your hand, let me finish this, you can discard it immediately. Now, whether or not something has utility or value is quite discretionary. So I will give you an example. I have a, my mother passed away several years ago. I have a bookmark of hers. I probably couldn't give it away. I mean, it is literally like the chintziest thing ever. If it got lost, I would be devastated, because it reminds me of her. So one of the reasons, some of the best practices indicate that when you remove established campsites, is you take a social service provider with you, is they can better work with homeless residents to identify whether or not something has value. If it doesn't, you can discard it immediately. Unsanitary items can also be discarded immediately. Weapons, drugs, and stolen property can be removed by law enforcement only. So if you are somebody who is on city staff, who are volunteer, and you are helping clear an established campsite, and you open up a tent and there are drugs, there is stolen property, or there is a weapon, do not pick it up. Go outside and find law enforcement, the statute and the case law, and that's really clear. If the property has value or has utility, the city has to take possession of it and hold it for 30 days in a secured location inside the city limits. I'm gonna finish this, and I'm gonna hurry, and then come back to you. What we would suggest is that it's not enough to make people, to let people have access to that, say, Monday through Friday between 8:00 to 5:00. You're gonna wanna fluctuate the hours, because remember, some people have jobs, some people work Monday through Friday, so there might wanna be at least one day a week where it's open outside of normal business hours, so that people can access their stuff. And then, I said it earlier, but this has to be stored inside the city limits of North Bend, in the back.
You have any questions about value, somebody?
Thank you, and then here.
Okay, my concern is cleaning up homeless camps is, they're usually full of crack pipes and serendos mixed all over in the garbage. You have to get a law enforcement officer to remove those?
If there is actual drug products, you should allow the law enforcement...
Residue?
I would tell you that you should work in tandem with law enforcement and let them give you direction. You also wanna make sure that it's not hazardous equipment to your own personal health and safety. So it should be part of an established process and practice, and I would suggest law enforcement should probably have general orders or standard operating procedures on how they go about cleaning up the site. I think I saw a hand over here, did I make that up? Yes, sir?
Once, once, uh, you take their stuff and put it in, you pound it wherever you wanna call it, and they come and they, uh, say it's theirs or whatever, then you're not responsible for it anymore after that, right?
So the question is, if you have to take personal property when you clean an established campsite, and somebody comes and collects it, are you no longer responsible for it? No, you're not. I would suggest as a lawyer that when you take it, you should, the, whoever's taking it, whether it's law enforcement or code enforcement, should have some type of inventory so that they know who belongs to who, and they can process it the same way they would any other evidence.
There was a hand for here, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Do we have to retain it for 30 days? Um, they can come and pick everything up at once, or are, are we, they can come and put it back, or, I mean, what kind of access do they have for those 30 days?
So the question is, for those of you that may not have been able to hear it, is, does somebody have to come back and get all of their stuff at one time? Can they come back over a period of time? How does it work? The statute is not clear. It just says that you have to hold it for 30 days. If I was erring on the side of caution, if I was my stuff and I had, let's say, five things, and I could only take three with me, but it was only 15 days that you had it, I would suggest you probably need to keep those other two things for the full 30 days. That's what I would suggest. In the back, yes?
So, this might seem like a easy answer for everyone else, but if you're, if you go to collect your, your property, and say, if you go to collect your property, and say, I have a warrant out there, is this something that they're free to go, and like, and it may not be clear, but are they free to go and pick it up without fear of retaliating, not necessarily retaliation, but of being picked up on my warrant? Is this something that's like, a line of, of police?
I don't know the answer to that. The statute doesn't have any direction on whether or not coming to pick up your stuff somehow requires law enforcement to ignore active warrants. It's, it's completely silent on that. I would suggest it would be appropriate to have as part of your community conversation in terms of how that goes forward. So this also applies, this property will apply if you're confiscating vehicles or recreational vehicles as well. Okay, so you had your federal law, then you had your state law, and what you're here today is to talk about what you want your local law to look like. So some cities already had what we call anti-camp camping ordinances on the books, right? They essentially prohibited sitting, sleeping, lying, or camping on public property. Those cities were mending their ordinances. Some cities have had absolutely no regulation on the books, and they're looking to impose regulations to try and mitigate some, some way to make sure that the entire public space is usable for everybody, so that homeless residents have a safe place to sit, to sleep, and to lie, and so that public spaces are accessible to everybody in the community. That's the tricky part that I think you all are here today. What we encourage people at the local level to do is that if you are going to look at your ordinances, they have to be objectively reasonable, right? Which is a legal word, that doesn't necessarily mean anything except to lawyers. There was an old decision, a Supreme Court judge said a couple years, well, probably decades ago now, I can't define pornography, but I know it when I see it. I can't define objectively reasonable in a way you will understand it, but I know it when I see it. That's what any lawyer's gonna tell you. It's gonna have to comply with all of those federal laws that we talked about at the beginning, all of the state laws that we just ran over. It's gonna need to be in place by July 1st. We are not gonna get into this, but there's a whole nother thing called state created danger. You don't have to worry about it as residents, but your city council and lawyers do. Yes, sir?
So, if I'm a homeless person and say I want to store my stuff for like 30 days, like, so I just keep, you guys can pound it, and you gotta store it for 30 days?
So the question is, if I'm somebody who's experiencing homelessness, and I want the city to store my stuff, can I, does this just allow me to turn the stuff over? No. The requirement that the city hold property for 30 days only kicks in if the city is removing an established campsite. So the city had to actively remove the campsite. Did I see somebody's hand? Yes.
You, you made a comment about the state created danger principle, you said you don't have to worry about it, but I would like to know that.
Yeah, me too. Okay, um, this is, okay.
Do I have a time? Are you okay?
Okay. So, the state created danger is, and I'm gonna use an example, because that's the easiest way to explain it. So this is one of the most convoluted legal things to explain, because it's entirely created by the courts. So many, many years ago, probably three or four decades ago, there was an individual in Michigan, it was the dead of winter, there was a bunch of snow on the ground, it was well below zero, it was freaking cold outside. From the Midwest, northern Michigan, it's freaking cold in the winter. And this gentleman had had way too much to drink at the neighborhood bar, and he wasn't gonna drive home, but he passed out in his car on purpose, so he would at least be warm. Some law enforcement officers came upon him, instead of just taking the keys, they took the keys and they made him get out of the car. He stumbled around, he fell, passed out in the snow, and he died from hypothermia. What state created danger says is that those officers put that gentleman in danger. The actions taken by the state police officers created a dangerous situation for a person that harmed that person. You can't do that as the government. You can't create a dangerous situation for your residents. So why does that matter when we're talking about this? So, a lot of cities are choosing to designate safe sleep sites, to create campsites, to create shelters, and what state created danger says is, if you're going to do that, you have to make sure that the space you're creating is not placing somebody in a dangerous situation. So if you're going to create it, you have to make sure that it's safe, and that it remains safe. Yes?
Part two of that, then, that, okay, like, the city, say they let RVs and stuff park over the slot, and a shanty town come up in the yard and everything, and put out houses and everything here, and try to service the homeless people here, maybe serve meals and here and stuff, the entire neighborhood would be riddled with crime, and eventually one of the neighbors is gonna get killed. So are you creating a danger by allowing a shanty town in the park?
So I'm gonna try and frame the question so people can hear. If the space that you create for homeless residents to utilize and ends up creating criminal behavior, or leads to a higher level of criminal behavior in the area, and somebody gets hurt, are, is the city liable for that? It would be hard, you're gonna have to prove that the city was deliberately negligent, that it was deliberately not taking care of its property, that it knew that it had a dangerous situation, and it ignored it. So it's not simple enough, I mean, because those same facts could apply, for example, if you were gonna build a jail, right? You're probably gonna see higher traffic from people who are more likely to be criminals than others. So it's, it's not as simple as that, there's going to have to be some intent.
And they knew they were putting housing people with wrap sheets a mile long that were clearly dangerous to the community?
I, I would just still tell you, sir, that this is gonna have to be pretty fact-specific. It's, and I, you're seeing cities across, not just Oregon, but Washington, California, and Nevada, who are establishing safe sleep sites and campsites that don't have barriers, that don't preclude people who have records or other things from entering. So it, it's not happened yet. What I can also tell you is that one of the models that people suggest is that in addition to providing safe sleep sites, is that you also provide needed services, so that you work to get people in stable housing, and then access to the services they need to find permanent housing through there. I think your hand in the back.
And I was like...
Yeah, in the back?
So... So, it must be a place open by the first, 2023. Is that making it a part of the funding, may not be in place by July 1st, 2023? Because some of these ordinances are going to have to have funding in place, just to avoid, to be kind, and to be ethical, and to block, I mean, it's, to be objectively reasonable, if then it's required funding.
So the question is, is does this deadline take into account whether or not cities or counties have funding to impose these? It's a great question. So, the July 1st deadline is really if you're gonna regulate it at all. So if you do not regulate sitting, sleeping, lying, or keeping warm and dry on the public property, then you're not in violation of the law on July 1st. If you want to regulate it in someplace, then you have to have it in effect by July 1st. To your question about funding, is the state going to directly give the city of North Bend funding? The answer to that is seemingly, I don't know yet. Now, there are several requests. The league is pushing one with the Oregon Mayors Association, of which your mayor has been one of the lead partners on, asking for direct funding to every city in Oregon. And we're asking for a per capita allotment, and for it to come every year, because this is not a cheap endeavor. If you are going to create safe sleeping spaces, you need funding that you don't have, because you have limited fiscal resources as a budget. If you wanted to provide counseling, if you wanted to provide navigation support, if you wanted to provide food, if you wanted to provide clothing, that is all currently coming out of your general fund, and your general fund is already tapped out. So to your point, cities and counties are lobbying hard for the state government to specifically allocate funding so that we can actually address this problem. It is a statewide problem. It is not a problem that cities inherently created ourselves, but you are on the front lines, and you are the people who are being forced to respond, to address, and hopefully one day maybe even prevent this problem, and you need funding to do that. Yes?
So just in a, in a, in a, the coastal towns in any, uh, the coastal towns that were left out of the request for funding, are we getting any kind of leeway in this?
Yes, so the question is, coastal towns were left out, are we getting any leeway? What most of you may not know, or may not understand, on her first day in office, Governor Kotek issued an emergency order. That emergency order essentially declared a homelessness crisis within seven of Oregon's eight continuums of care. The coast, actually, two-thirds, 26 counties and 145 cities are not located in a continuum of care that is entitled to direct aid immediately. So those cities that are in the seven continuums of care have immediate access to about $35 million in funding from the current budget, and the governor is proposing $130 million be allocated from next year's budget in the next 60 days for release. That's just a proposal, she's gotta get that through the legislature. To your question, your coastal caucus, so your coastal senators and Republicans are outraged at your exclusion, they have made that clear to Governor Kotek. The League of Oregon Cities and Oregon Mayors Association have made that clear. I personally sat down with the governor last week, I think it was last week, was it last week? It was last week, um, and said, you left them out, and you can't say that they're not having a crisis, I'll show you the numbers that they're having a crisis. She has assured us that her full funding proposal, and the legislature has assured us that they recognize this is a state problem, and that they plan to give money to rural Oregon. How much money they plan to give, and in what method, still remains unknown.
Well, the coast is one of those places where most homeless people flock, because it's warmer here. And if we're not gonna give any money to take care of the situation, that just...
So what I, so his point is that the coast has a home, you're correct. Most of the coastal communities, if you're looking at it on a percentage basis, you have you have just as big of a homeless crisis as the city of Portland, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Gresham, Trout, Dale Salem, Eugene, Medford. You are comparable based on your population, absolutely, sir. And you should be provided funding, we're working to get you that. But I will be completely honest, lobbyists aren't gonna get it done. If you want funding for your cities, then everybody in this room needs to be calling your state senator and your state representative over the next week, and you need to tell them, "We have a crisis and we need funding." Your city council budgets aren't gonna do it, guys. You're gonna have to get funding from the state government. Yes?
Can't we just take the parts and make it as needed?
So, so those are questions to talk about when you guys give ideas. Is there another question on the law? Because I think we need to move on to the next segment.
So, the other side of the funny thing, I've noticed in other rural areas, is they just provide no services. The weather invites people, but if there's no services, then they have nothing to come for, because they can't live here.
So, the, the question, or rather, statement is, if there's no services, then people have nowhere to come to. So, I would say that generally speaking, my understanding is that there are homeless residents who are residents of North Bend and Coos County who are here. There is data from the state, federal governments, and local service providers that indicate that. Additionally, if it matters for, for your edification, there is a whole host of resources that suggest that people are much more likely to come out of homelessness if they are allowed to stay in their community of residence, because they have stronger ties, and it is easier to overcome their challenges if they have built-in support networks, which are more commonly found in their actual residences. That, that would just be what some of the research is suggesting. So, I will say this, I did put some copies out for a legal guide, some of you picked it up. If you were interested, if there weren't enough copies and you want one, come find me, and I can email it to you this evening when I get back. Thank you.
This is a complicated topic. This is not easy. And now you understand why I said on the omelet that this is a North Bend issue that we have to address in North Bend by North Benders. Uh, if you're in the county, they have a county ordinance, and they will have to look at all of their codes, procedures, policies as well. Same thing if you're in Coos Bay, Bandon, or anywhere else. This is mandated to us. You also heard her saying, "Well, we could do nothing." Uh, and you can only imagine what North Bend would look like if we do nothing. Um, so, we'll move along here. I hope you will get a little interactive, um, and you've been sitting a while, so, uh, let's see if we can get over here. So, you've heard time, manner, and place mentioned multiple times. That is our mission in North Bend, is the time, manner, and place. The issue here is objectively reasonable. I can assure you this, I'm not a betting man, but we've got a casino in town. If I went down there, I'd have just as much luck appeasing everyone in this room as deciding whether or not it's gonna come up, red, black, or green. That's the reality. And so, uh, it will be consensus, and we're going to have folks love us, and we're going to have folks cater us, and we may have some folks in between. And so, the elected officials that are up here, I told them that buckle up, this is gonna be the most interesting six months, uh, because you're going to have to work on an ordinance. It's gonna have to be objectively reasonable, which there's no definition. It's gotta be put in place. You have to figure out how we're going to fund it, and then you have to look your constituents in the eyes and say, "Uh, we don't really have a choice here, this is state law, we have to move forward, and we have to operate in the best interest of everyone in the city." That's their oath. Um, as staff members, my job is to take that ordinance and implement it. And you've seen, um, changes, um, and we'll get to that, uh, that have been made leading up to this. So, again, our mission, time, manner, and place. When you, um, look at place, think where. So, places where is camping to occur? Then you move on to time, when? Night, day? Most folks don't know this, I always say, I opened it with, "You don't know what you don't know." Through this process, I learned that a state rest stop on the highway, you're allowed to stay there 12 hours. I didn't know that. So, you learn so much through this process. And then the manner, uh, how? Is it going to be in a camp, is it going to be in RVs, is it going to be in a park? There was a lot of, um, discussion well up to this. The previous, um, council addressed it. Uh, after the election, we have some new folks on the council and some that have left. Um, and, uh, we had town halls, we've done surveys, we've, we've done a lot of research. All that data is going to be, so if you signed up, you'll get a link to our homeless site. Uh, it'll have a lot of the links to the resources, all of this information, but it'll have all that past data. And here's what we know about North Bend. Very much like you have this aisle here, it is divided on almost every issue. What to do, how to do it, where to do it, whether or not to fund it or not. Um, it is extremely divisive, I get that. But we're going to work forth and try to get as much consensus as we can to put in ordinance before. Coos Bay, um, has one in place, they've been tweaking theirs. Uh, and why? Because they had an existing camping ordinance in place. Goes back to the 60s and 70s, different, um, uh, cities and towns had put camping ordinance back in. Um, you know, the free love there, if you will. Um, we didn't have a camping ordinance. So, we did make some tweaks and changes here, um, to, uh, sort of move the city forward. Uh, but we're going to have to do one. Um, the county has put one in, in place, and they have designated. And again, with the most recent, um, case law out of the grants pass, I'm certain that they're going to review everything as, as they have to. All right, so, let's concentrate on where. Let's start with where. And so, when you all came in, you should have been given three dots. Think of this as a stoplight. We wanna know what North Benders and North Bend businesses think about where camping should be allowed. So, your red dot, think of that as, I told you, the survey, very divisive, the not in my backyard, the NIMBYs, okay? And through the survey, folks undoubtedly were, "I don't want any camping in my area," okay? So, so think of this as red dot, okay? And so, you have streets, parks, right-of-way sidewalks, in and around your property. Think of the yellow dot as, okay, I've already drawn the line with the red, so I'm willing to sort of compromise and say, "Nah, I'd be okay if camping was here in this area." Again, on the public spaces. And last but not least, the third dot, and we're gonna ask you to be honest and put all three dots on the board. That third dot is the red dot, say, "If I have to have camping, this is where I want it." Okay? So, you got three dots. Now, the reality... But now, we're going to move on to the when area. So, I will tell you that in reviewing most ordinances throughout the state, predominantly, that they've been setting overnight hours as a common approach. In fact, in the survey data that we received from, uh, North Benders, um, they also basically agreed that if they're going to have camping and they're going to restrict it when they say the time, that they actually, um, prefer it in the evening. Uh, the, the, the when, as you heard from cutting with the League, still involves that 72-hour notice. Uh, the law enforcement resources will not and will never be in the moment. The reality is, there's never going to be enough law enforcement. I will tell you that if you, um, go to our website, you fill out a, um, a concern, uh, it comes in, whether it's code enforcement, or illegally parked vehicle, or, or homeless, or any of that, any code enforcement complaint in the city, it automatically directly goes to our code enforcement. Um, it, um, also goes to, um, our, our Public Works Department, and then I also get a copy. So, I see, um, all of those on a regular basis. And the reality is, is that, uh, if you heard our chief maker presentation recently, um, we generally have about two officers at any given time, um, uh, on the city. Um, we're thrown in the city. Um, so, that's, that's just the reality of staffing, when you look at, um, staffing. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, we're, we're full staff right now, but we have folks that we're putting through the academy, which means they can't be out on their own. They are with a field training officer, um, and they're, uh, patrolling with other officers or in tandem with officers. And so, um, this is going to be an opportunity, I told you it's going to be interactive. So, um, we have moved forward some of the previous data, uh, that we had in surveys, um, into the next question. And so, again, um, if you do not have a cell phone, um, for the next one, raise your hand, a staff member can come over and, uh, enter the information for you. Uh, but we're going to go to another MENTI poll, uh, poll, in order to address, uh, the issue of when. And so, uh, we want you to go to MENTI.com, put in that same number, and you're going to have a question that says, "When should people be allowed to camp or not camp in North Bend?" And so, uh, it's going to ask you about what timetable. Again, if you do not have a cell phone or you need assistance, raise your hand, a staff member will come to you. Okay, so what we're seeing here is, um, first choice is that, um, uh, if we have an ordinance that, um, 51 so far says that, uh, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Uh, the second is 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Uh, the third is 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Uh, the fourth, 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and the last one, 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So, you've heard, uh, a lot on, uh, the law, the ordinance, and, uh, the mayor notes, we, we share a lot of frustration. Our police department hears frustration, staff, uh, we hear frustrations from the public all the time, uh, because this is the most divisive part, uh, and that is the how. And so, time is pretty easy, um, uh, but this is, do we allow it in RVs? Do we, um, have a designated park as a location? Uh, do we, um, uh, put together, you know, funding for an entire shelter system? And so, our local school district, uh, which, uh, is North Bend School District, school districts, very much like zip codes, do not follow the city batteries. And so, the North Bend School District, uh, actually goes, um, well, uh, north of here and, um, also into parts of Coos Bay, which folks would find surprising, but it does. And so, they have roughly about 200 homeless in the school system with families, everyone all included. Roughly about 200. And you're like, "How come that bit?" Well, could mean that they're sleeping in an RV. I believe, we recently had a family, was it seven? Um, with, uh, the, the two and five children, some of those in the school system. And, um, uh, you have folks that are, you know, couch surfers, and so, uh, and then there are those that, uh, just simply, you know, are, uh, staying in cars in people's driveways. Uh, but the numbers are real true numbers, there's roughly about 200. We also have what's called the time and place, uh, the, uh, point time, point time, or the PIT, uh, survey. Um, the, the data that the governor, um, in Uzayn is, is what, is what was available. But I will tell you that the last time the point and time survey was done, here in Coos County, we were at a height of COVID data. And a lot of the seniors that normally would volunteer weren't volunteering. And so, the data actually shows that, uh, we down here on the coast actually had a significant drop in homelessness. Now, if there's anyone in the audience that believes we had a significant drop, um, please raise your hand. Yeah. And so, um, uh, yes?
We did the COVID, or, we did the count, point time count, just a few days ago.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I don't know whether you got those statistics or not.
Um, they have not officially provided us the data. Um, and I know that several of our council members, for instance, participated in that, um, as well as, um, uh, our police and other staff. So, I appreciate the volunteers that participated in that.
Yeah, that's what I do over here.
Yeah, so we, we appreciate that. Why is it important? Because it ties to funding. And so, the, um, you heard the League mention the, uh, declaration of emergencies and the fact that the coast was left out. Well, their pathway is not to include us, a path is have your local county declare a state of emergency and that they are in arm of the state, and they can request funds, and then the local cities can go to the county and get those funds. So, um, the pressure is on for our county folks. All right, so back to the how. Um, the, uh, the reason I told you about the code enforcement is the number one thing that we hear is folks that are sleeping, defecating, littering, what have you, sleeping, resting on public right of ways. Uh, and, uh, so, I will tell you that these public right of ways were never really intended or designed, uh, for camping uses. Um, Sizzler, for a big example, okay? The actual property owners fenced in the property to protect their property. Uh, it's the right of way around, and it's state right of way. It's not our right of way, it's state right of way, but it is public right of way. So, you see that camping. Um, the, uh, the no enforcement by citation, uh, again, uh, where no shelter is available, so again, the how is, what does that mean? Do we provide shelters? We ran some numbers, and we submitted them, uh, to the state. And does anyone, I'm just gonna allow two people to give us a guess of what the cost would be to the city of North Bend if we, um, opened up a shelter facility, we staffed it, we took care of sanitation, uh, bathrooms, uh, pest control, everything. Rough estimate, yes, in the back?
About $5,000 per unit.
Okay?
Did she say $5,000?
$5,000 per unit. How much?
$200.
$200,000? Um, so, in order to set it up for 50, um, in order to accommodate everyone that we have in North Bend, based on current, is just north of $4 million. That's your law. So, it's, uh, it's possible. That is, that is physically for us to get land, get 50, 50, uh, shelters, get the plumbing in place, electricity in place, security in place, everything to meet the full letter of the law, is north of that $4 million. Yes, sir?
Is, did they consider the old hospital, possibly?
So, the old hospital was built, purchased by the Urban Renewal Agency. So, yes, the, the city could buy from the Urban Renewal Agency that property if it so chose and redevelop that. But because it was bought with Urban Renewal Agency, you cannot create life with money that is designed to eliminate life. And so, that property, um, is designated to be affordable housing. And so, you'll hear about that momentarily. All right, so the how.
And, uh, Mr. Allen, I do wanna also make just a comment as we work through these, because a question was asked earlier. We're still talking about within the city limits of North Bend. As Mr. Taddy made clear earlier, at least state department laws, was that we need to have a solution in the city limits. So, this is not, we're not thinking about something out in the county property or anything like that right now. This is within the city limits, is what the law is saying.
Exactly. But you could always lobby your legislators and get them to actually modify or change the law, so that we could actually coordinate with the county or other cities. Yes, sir?
So, like you say, get the shelters and stuff, or you can, or are you thinking of something like the pallet shelters, things that they, uh, in Coos Bay down there, right?
Yes, that's an example, uh, that's Cobank Village. But yes, in order, if we were to do that, because we have no shelters in the city limits of North Bend.
So, you say that'd be like $4 million or something like that?
Just a startup, that's not recurring costs, yes, sir.
Do we have any information of how that community is, is working?
Oh, yes, yes, Cobank Village? Yes, again, um, you'll get a follow-up email with a link to our homeless page. There's actually a video link there, the Deveraux Center came and actually spoke about that facility. Um, but yeah, and, and they encourage folks to go do tours. I think the Deveraux Center does a bad job about promoting itself, so they're working on that now. Uh, because there are positive things. Not, not everybody wants to remain homeless. Uh, this is poll question number three. Again, we're going to move forward the data, um, uh, from the previous surveys, and those surveys were online, they were in writing, um, they're through public comment. Uh, but this one will be, "What action should the city take to address and prevent homelessness in North Bend?" And this addresses that how question. How do you want North Bend and, and its elected officials to move forward, um, on, uh, this issue? All right, so, um... All right, so the first top one here, real neck and neck unless someone votes real quickly. And so this data may change on the fly if someone else comes in. Yeah, C52. So the first one says, "The city should explore all options to develop a shelter site to prevent camping on city streets and in city parks." All right, so that's 24%. The second, I always told you, we're divisive. So the second one is, "Restrict camping on sidewalks." Okay, so it's like, restrict on sidewalks, figure out, get them in a shelter. 20%, "Provide alternative shelter to keep camping out of city parks." So again, shelter, keep them out of the parks. 17%, "Partner with housing providers to build low income housing." 12% is "Allow private property owners, businesses, churches, and individuals to have overnight camping on their property." And then 4% "Do nothing beyond the minimum required by case law and state law." All right, so next step. Where are we going with all this? Because that's important.
Yeah, so after tonight, we're taking the data that we gathered from the people in the room for today and then the previous surveys. And we'll be meeting again on March 6th. And this will be a second town hall where we'll come up with a draft ordinance. So I am sure all of you have a neighbor or a friend that would want to come with you next time. We do have over 10,000 residents in the city of North Bend and many business owners. And I think we probably only have about 80 or 90 each night. And although I thoroughly appreciate all of your participation, it would be great to see if you guys could all bring a friend next time so that we could fill this room and get as much feedback as we can. This is such an important community decision that we need to come up with together. So that next meeting will have a draft ordinance based off of the information and over that for them. And was there something specific that you wanted to talk about?
So ahead of that meeting, we will book for. We have to get started working on the model ordinance. We'll make sure that that's published. Yet again, why, we asked for your email addresses so that you could see that. So when we come back, next time, we'll start talking about that ordinance. That's what these elected officials, your elected officials, and by the way, they sign up for the job, but they're volunteers. They get a stipend, so 25 bucks a month? After pensions, I think they get 17 bucks. So I have the utmost admiration for these elected officials. And they're my bosses, I'm not gonna say that. All right, so I want to, very quickly, because we want to get to public comment. So it just didn't start here. As the mayor opened up, she said, you know, where have we been? Where we are, where do we need to go? So we just told you where we need to go. You've seen where we, you know, how we got here and where we are now. And I want to very quickly highlight all of the parallel things that are going on about this topic in your community. It's your community, you live here. I get the pleasure to manage it for you. So the first rule is the creation of a full-time community resource officer. They seek out practically homeless residents and they provide and connect them with needed resources and assistance. They work in concert with a community resource officer in Coos Bay. That individual, I'm getting blinded here, but I think Shane Dunning is still, Officer Dunning is in the back, raise your hand, he's a godsend. I hear nothing but positive feedback from everyone, from the providers to the homeless and community members in between. It took us a while to get there, but again, the council reacted to feedback. They put it in the budget and he worked. He also works to reconnect homeless with loved ones and family who have no way to connect or get where they want to go. And so they have this great program. They get bus tickets, they make sure there's someone on the other end, and they reconnect them with their loved ones. Today, we had federal funds, ARCA funds, don't want to talk about the American Rescue Act. Over half a million dollars so far has been spent on homeless-related efforts in North Bend. Over half a million of federal dollars that have come in. Right now, for every dollar that you all pay to the city in property taxes, we brought in 86 cents in state, federal, and nonprofit or private foundation grants in the past year. So the council's working for you. We are partnering with the Deveraux Center to help homeless residents obtain needed services. And so that we, if they have a bed open in Cobank Village or in the warming shelter or elsewhere, they work with us, they help reconnect them. They have a database, they know who these folks are. And Shane Dunning is in their office on a regular basis. This is one of multiple town hall meetings that we have had to identify the causes and solutions to homeless and housing and the crisis that is in our community. We've done a lot of environmental remediation, that's a fancy word, by the way, two words, and Saturday cleanup. We have three folks, three folks in our parks department that take care of all the parks, all of the public buildings. And they go in and clean up whatever they find in our parks and then at our camps. And a huge shout out to the Oregon's Bay Area Beautification. They have partnered with the city multiple times. In fact, they're doing a cleanup, 12:30 Saturday at Ferry Road Park. Two hours of your time. I understand that they're arranging potentially hot dogs to be cooked and served. And so just a bit of time, we're trying to work out those logistics. Someone suggested after the cleanup, it's like, "No, please do it before they get out there." Because the mayor and I and councilors have all been out there with them. So big shout out to them. North Bend's engaged with a housing needs analysis and be followed by housing implementation plan to address our housing shortage. You're homeless if you can't afford a home. When you look at the data, this is not just an Oregon issue. This is not just a North Bend issue, this is a nationwide issue. And the values of the homes have gone up. That if you are, for instance, one of the 3,300 folks employed in Coos County in the tourism industry, unless you're the owner of that business, chances are you can't on your own income afford a home in North Bend. So that's going to address that. And that also goes to the addressing of this question that we had about the annex. So the city council and the Urban Renewal Agency has gotten together. They have surveyed every single lot and property available for housing in North Bend. It will go in this document, which is the request for expressions of interest. It will go out to developers. And we want to partner with them to build affordable housing and workforce housing in North Bend. The mayor, as it was mentioned earlier, was appointed to the Oregon Mayors Association. We're sort of tied at the hip, if you will, we're on a lot of boards together. And so we're constantly advocating. And then the information comes back to the council so that they can make decisions. But one of the proposals is that perpetual amount that would potentially bring $424,000 to just North Bend to help fund some of this. It's going to be up to every one of you all to lobby the legislature to help get funding for all of this. We have a creation of a community services officer, he is so responsible for code compliance. So I said, when those emails come in, the command staff gets them, code enforcement gets them, I get them, public works get them. This is a dedicated resource. This is actually the person, they're actually, you'll see them in, the lettering on the truck's almost done, they've almost been conspicuous. But the lettering's almost done on the truck. And you'll see them out in the community. And they're the ones that generally put the stickers on or follow up. And again, they're doing as much administrative groundwork for the police so that the police can do the police work and not burden with the administrative stuff. We revised our toning ordinance to reduce the removal of abandoned vehicles from 10 days to 72 hours. North Bend, Coos Bay, and Coos County were awarded $1 million. I know that sounds like, whoa, where's all that money? Okay, it's $500,000 and $500,000. There are two members from the city of Coos Bay, two from the city of North Bend, two from Coos County. And that is the advisory committee. We've hired a outside consultant that is very well-versed in this community and has a lot of fabric in this community who is working on a strategic plan to address homelessness. And once we have that strategic plan, which is a five-year plan, it'll go before the legislature, you'll hear a lot more about that effort because they're in the community, talking to the community, and will have more feedback. But once that's done, then we can actually get that money unfrozen to actually start to address some of the issues. But we have to get the plan approved first. The North Bend Public Library solid secured a state grant for a social worker that works directly with homelessness and others. This has been a godsend. Folks that normally would not show up on the radar feel comfortable going into libraries. And so this has been a concerted effort with the North Bend, Coos Bay, and Lakeside Libraries. And it's been so successful. We're now talking about how to extend that grant with other partners to move that long-term. North Bend's working directly with our state legislature. In fact, we're advocating for a slice of a billion dollars for legislature approved for behavioral health to come to the southern Oregon coast. This is for things like behavioral management, mental health, sober services, all of these wraparound services that we don't have. I mean, I just recently learned a interesting statistic, which is, you know, our hospital, like, it's the only hospital, like, from here to where Florence and South, where you can actually go in and they deliver a baby, short of the, North Bend Fire Department, by the way. They deliver two on my dime so far. I feel blessed to have such great talent on the fire department. And then, jumpstart this weekend, the mayor and I, along with other elected officials from the county, met with our US Senator Jeff Merkley. And we have been advocating for $4 million from HUD in order to demolish that annex and make sure it's affordable housing. The reason is, is without government involvement on this project, it'll never stay affordable housing. That's the problem. They always start out, says it's going to be affordable housing, and then after cost, 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 it's way up here. We know we have a housing issue. We have to be able to keep our educators in housing, our first responders, our folks at the hospital, other key critical industries. And so when they recruit and can't find housing, my own primary care provider couldn't find housing. The superintendent of our school was in an RV for a year. The head of the housing authority, the housing authority for North Bend, Coos County, Curry County, got the job and down to the wire couldn't find housing. And he's the executive director of the housing authority. So understand that. So it's a critical issue, but we have a great relationship with our delegation. I told you from the get-go, we don't play the political game here. You know, our elected officials are elected officials, and you respect them for who they are, and you work within those boundaries. And that's the cool thing about North Bend, Coos Bay, and Coos County and the other cities, is that it's the cooperative relationships so that we can move the envelope forward on key issues that are important to the constituents. All right, Madam Mayor, back to you.
So we do have a public comment period this evening. Typically, our public comment periods are about 30 minutes. We limit each person to speak to three minutes. If any group of three or more persons are sharing a common viewpoint on any subject which is to address the council, then that group is encouraged to select a spokesperson who is encouraged to present the views of the group. Provide that the council with your name and address prior to giving the comments. Members of the public are expected to follow the same rules of professionalism and decorum as required by the council itself. And myself will recognize city residents first of North Bend who want to give priority, North Bend residents to speak first, then city business owners, and then anyone who wishes to speak. So I've got our city recorder here to help us take a look at where we're at with these. And then what we'll do is the people who are giving public comment, we will have them, I'll let you call them up. You can use the mic, hang on to that for them. So we'll start with the North Bend residents. Is Anthony Collins still here? I think he may have had to leave. So I don't see Anthony Collins. Ken Benetti, is Ken Benetti, if you want, so we're going to go ahead. I got a mic coming to you back there, so Ken. And we'll go ahead, and who has the timer?
I just, most of the, I signed up not knowing what I was going to say or what information was going to pass here, but I was impressed with the humane approach that you're taking with this. And one thing that hasn't really been mentioned is the need for mental health services and drug and alcohol rehab services. I don't see how you can adequately deal with the problem, this issue, without those kind of services being ready, available, anonymous, and free. Thank you.
Is Greg Good still here? Greg Good? Greg Good. Connie Monahan. Connie? And we've got Jenny, Ms. Counselor, Nora, Connie, can you raise your hand? Somebody would come to you. We've got a Councilor Nora.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, I did sign up, but then I live right across the street from Oak Street Park. Oak Street Park, and I live right, my home faces Oak Street Park. For three years, we lived, we have lived with people parking in the area. Many of the people who park there are homeless. They sleep in their vehicles and they cause no issues. They do use the restrooms. They are like having a neighbor living in the car. They do need services, they do need support. But then there are those who park directly in front of them, within 30 feet, who break laws, who cause chaos. They are aggressive against myself, my husband, people who walk the streets, their dogs run wild and are aggressive with other dogs. The lawyer did say all of these laws were appropriate. But breaking the law that do exist, the laws that do exist, is not appropriate. Many, 90, 80% of the people who live there, the industry that I'm referring to, are unregistered, uninsured, motorhomes with no licenses. My life has been, I don't sleep at night when they're there. We have to hire security guards to sit in front of our home because of the anxieties that this all creates. And once again, this is not replying, I'm referring to the homeless who live just right from, a corner from our home. They sleep at night. They don't, they're not roaming the streets, they're not attracting people who are on drugs. They are respected members of the neighborhood or the community. The ones I refer her to are the people who choose not to follow any laws and they break the rules, the laws, all the time. I'm very nervous and I'm very angry. And I hope you heard what I said.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Joe Monahan and Councilor Nora. If you could, go to Joe, we'll restart that timer for three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so we live across Mulberry Park. Officers come and they tag the unregistered vehicles. 24-hour red tag. No one ever comes back, no one ever comes back by. We call it in after it's been over the 24 hours. We don't have anybody. So then it just keeps progressing, progressing. Saturday night, officers recall, record it. We get a phone call back, "We're not coming." My shift's over, I'm going to pass it on to the other shift. The other shift came out, the other shift came out at 7:00. $28 after that vehicle was tagged. Both tags on those vehicles were supposedly tagged and tracked. So they just move on down the street. Every time these vehicles are tagged, the police department has an excuse on why they can't get to it. If the tag is done for 20 steps, new time, 12 more, they should be there to impound that vehicle itself. These two attorneys that I'm talking about have been bipping around the neighborhood. These two are these, and I'm talking about, have been bipping around the neighborhood for the last five months, wasting everyone's time and energy. And, right now, you have a CRO and a code enforcement, they both work Monday through Friday, eight to five. So nothing happens on the weekday. I would change the days off so they overlap into the weekend, have one or have two say once, so you ultimately can do the other days together. It's just getting ridiculous that my house gets shot up by some homeless with their pellet gun, and everyone turns around and doesn't do anything. And then the police show up and they're buddy-buddies with these clowns, and everything's like a good old hometown with them. And then we're in wrong, and when I point things out, I get threatened to be arrested for disorderly conduct. It's bull crap. At the end of the day, I'm still gonna be in this community. Those people are gonna be, after they've grown our community, and go somewhere else lacking their answers. And it's disgusting that the citizens have to be putting up with this. And things need to be done, and done correctly, and followed through on what has to be done.
All right. This is David Laird here. David Laird, raise your hand if you're here. Patty.
All right, I just want to say thank you for all the information. Are there any county officials here? Are you, I don't know. I asked, Dr. John Sweet, yeah, I'm going back there, they're here. So, I heard David mentioned something about that we need to get the county involved, to our state and our city get some funding. You're on notice. Please.
Connie, you're, if you're, I know you're from your staff, I'm so sorry to be late for having to do this. I hope that teams are making a police department to fix the errors that they're making and take care of these tow vehicles. I do feel that there's a lot of homeless people that sleep in cars, you know, they're down on their luck, but they're good people. It's the ones that break the law. Patty said that, you know, we needed to provide new services, and we do, but not if they're breaking the law. So if they're breaking the law, we need to do something with them.
George Gallagher here. George, we've got George, Councilor Jones, and George Gallagher.
Thank you, ladies, we appreciate it. I really don't wanna get down on the Oak Street Park, because I live there too, and it is out of control, and it is three RVs. They go from Oak Street Park, over by the duct branch, and then that's over the church, and they make those runs. And they've been there for quite some time, but I had made notes, to just sort of question. The mental health and drug thing, okay, I understand right here from the city of North Bend, and some of you might know me, I don't know. I've been cleaning this over thirty-eight years. Today's a miracle life, here's a why. I, it needs to be available, health needs to be available, but it's gotta be in one place. We can have all of these issues, and what I hear is, okay, we need to have these services available. Okay, if we have one place where the homes are, we can focus those services. Okay, the communication is, this is great, I appreciate this. And I talked to David, no, hopefully, we can come up with a volunteer situation where we can have a public officer or at least a day's on it, so to speak, that if we don't know the answer to the question, we can say, I don't know, but let's find out. Instead of three lines on Facebook, I'm sorry, I'm old, I hate Facebook. It's the biggest fear and passion in the world. And the one thing that I, other thing I want to say, and this is an unrelated subject, but it is related. When we go through this process, I wish the city council would let the citizens in North Bend know, we can make these regulations, and we can do all the regulations, and have all the rules and everything else we want, but if you can't enforce them for people that are getting their houses shot up, those regulations don't really do us any good help. And when I say that, what I'm talking about, I did a little research myself, I don't know what they think these gentlemen back here, I don't know what they think county officers back here. It is not enough, if you do a little bit of research, you will find out that if you go to the Rhabarck County Police Department, which has a lower median income, a lower median house cost, they start their officers out at roughly eight to ten thousand dollars more a year. Now, folks, I'm asking the city of North Bend to understand, if you want a good, solid police force, you, if young men that wanna be there for a career, you cannot do that if they're not making a legion of the buy-hold on that bitch.
That's right. All right, and we've got Ron Kootch, Councilor Jones, if you wanna get Ron Kootch on the aisle here. Ron, one of our planning commissioners. All right, Ron, we'll reset the timer for three minutes.
Like many of you, I decided to speak not now, we're gonna be in there, but I should never have thought in the past. I saw the orphan since I was fifteen. I pay my taxes, and it's not fair for me to pay for other bills, right? But my mama told me, a lot of things are fair, son. It's also not fair that some people have no home to live, due to, in many cases, no call to their home. So I'm gonna have to go fair out the window. So here's the question I have for the audience. Am I my brother's keeper? Am I my brother's keeper? I say yes, I am. For all residents of planet Earth, and I say to all brothers and sisters, we live in a community, and I think we're in some way responsible for others in our community. This is hard stuff. This is hard stuff, there's no easy answers. But doing nothing is not an option. Doing nothing for each other individually is not an option. We all need to take part. We've been talking about homeless people, but I believe we need to talk about homeless We're talking about people, and some of the people, as I mentioned, are pretty unsavory. I don't have a lot of compassion for them, but there are some who are just between a rock and a hard place, and they have no place to go. I have compassion for those people, and I ask that all of you, there's gonna be compassion for those people. Am I my brother's keeper? Yes, we are. We are our brothers and sisters' keeper. So, my ask is to all, all of you here, work together for solutions. I'd like to thank the city council, and the city administrator, and President Patty for being here. I'd like to thank you for your leadership. Y'all, please, do what you can to help these folks out, to help these folks back there out. Okay? Thank you to all of you. Our elected officials, our city administrator, our city staff, our police force, and please, please, give them some grace, and give them, get it.
All right, Ken Focker, can you speak? Councilor, please, can you speak up here in the corner?
Everybody pretty much addressed the issues that I was gonna speak about, but one idea I have, I know it belongs to the state, and that's Sutter Creek. It's got all the facilities where people can, you can make it a campsite, you could provide a bus to bring people to and from, it's got all the sanitary devices, it's everything. So maybe you can work with the state to make it a homeless camp.
Can I call out the mayor of Lake Side right now? If you wanna just wave, she came here to listen tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Is Perry Holman here? Perry?
Yes, Perry.
All right, and we've got a couple of business owners of North Bend. Is Ray Dwyer here? Ray, all right, here, Councilor, please, if you're there. Thank you, Ray.
My name is Ray Dwyer, I'm frontline defense security service, I'm also a lifetime member, lifetime resident of the city of North Bend. Warren Ray is here. I've seen a lot of things come into this community, a lot of things, and changes in this community. One of the things that I've seen, that I really appreciate the city council and the city looking at, is trying to find a solution to our homeless problem, and go to these extents and saying, you guys are doing a great job. The problem I see is that we have a certain amount of individuals within our community that one percent, they're tying in with this homeless community, and that are causing ninety-nine percent of our problems. And, we need help of enforcement. I appreciate your comment about our law enforcement officers not making enough money. We need to have a good law enforcement staff in order to take care of our community, take care of these, and have some sort of repercussions for individuals who commit these crimes. I was actually out on a patrol one night, and somebody broke into a vehicle in my house and stole a chainsaw while I was out on doing security patrol. Do you talk about, I already there, and it happens to each and every one of us in our community. So, it just, there's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have another business owner, Tony Blissick. Tony Blissick, Tony Blissick here. All right, so we've got three left of individuals who are not from North Bend that came. Here we have Chris Ricker. Chris, if you wanna speak, we've got Councilor Wilson over there with the mic.
I don't.
It is hard to hear on the back, so I'll ask you for the mic, please. We'll go ahead and start the timer, Chris, at three minutes.
Until we address the underlying issues of addiction and mental health, we're gonna be fighting an ongoing problem. And as far as getting places where people live, I was almost, almost two years under prison, I was an alcoholic for five, I've been sober for almost five years. Until they have some way to help themselves and see that somebody trying to help them, they're just gonna continue to do what they're doing. You know, there's no help. You know, they have to have this established address, you have to have a place they can shop, where you can put the bags, the safe. If you don't have that, you're not gonna be better than yourself, you're gonna be stuck in a rut. That's how I feel about it, but, I don't know, I'm probably a bad one. But, if we set up the places for them to live, like a sleep safe site, like Cobain Village has done, which is five hundred thousand of that, you're saying four million, just open up one in here in town?
With the land.
That's, but they opened one down here on the gravel parking lot, and we do businesses that's doing flourishing. You know, have you ever, I have never heard since opening anything bad happening. You know? Why don't we open more places like that, so at least these, some of people get the help. But until we address the mental health and addiction problems, and go along with it, say oh, hand to hand, nothing's gonna be accomplished, okay, trying to do, and pay to save the hell, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Chris. Is Jody Hoffman here? Jody left, all right. If your friends or your people, they still have, they wanna come to a regular council meeting, you can always take public comment on even our work sessions on Mondays and Tuesdays, the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of the month. So the last public comment I have is another resident from Coos Bay, it's Tom Brown here. Tom, all right, Councilor Wilson, I'll have you up, Tom.
I don't know what I was gonna say, but, five million dollars? I think you're crazy if you put out any kind of money like that for this situation. I mean, if I, if it were me, I would take a park, convert it, you know, put a park for the parking lot for the mobile homes and the tents and the, you know, fence it, have one opening, have a security guy, some type of security guy managing it, and gets it in again. Any long-term housing type thing, that's some totally different, that's different. And, enabling drug addicts isn't really a good idea either, and that's what a lot of these people are. You'll, what you need to do is have something like that park thing I just mentioned, and then get up, weed out the ones that are really wanna go forward, and take them to a place like where Coos Bay, where they have a little home, and, you know, and help them people. And those other ones, they need to, they need to slide around in the ground until they can bring it to themselves to help themselves, because I was a drug addict for twenty years in this community. And people, I mean, I went through, I went through the drug classes, or the rehabilitation things, like three or four times, and it was a good place to go meet druggies. When it came to, when I quit, I, I found it, found it, I had to hit rock bottom, and stayed on there for a long time before, you need help, you need help, and then I utilized them classes, and, you know, but until I was ready, it's a waste of money. That's all I got to say about that.
All right, thank you. All right, that was our last public comment that we had signed up for, unless we can take one or two more, I know we're past the time, but is there one or two more public comments, if anybody else wanted to speak, we can come to you right now. All right, so we'll go ahead, and we can over here to our city administrator, and see if there was any more slides that you had up here, or went up there. I've got, we've got Councilor Nora coming up with the mic. We'll go ahead and set that timer back for three minutes.
So, I work at Full Bend Park, I work at the, I'm a case manager there. I know that even with the four million dollars, like, that could be used to do to make four different Full Bend facilities, right, we're only a point four units, and yes, we are reading out people that wanna make something of their lives. We do a lot of work, we do as much as we possibly can, and we don't, we're only resources that there is in town. I know that there's a lot of dissension in the fact that we seem to enable people, well, if they don't have anywhere else to go with, they're not being fed something, they're gonna come out and they're gonna cause more havoc. Speaking from someone who is homeless, and is a severe junkie and addict, but atheist with my wife, I know that that's a fact, because I know if I hadn't had homeless shelters to go to, today's shelters to go to, I wouldn't have been creating more havoc, and I was a problem child. I'm not sitting here saying, I did everything by the book, I was a problem, I was one of the problems, I wasn't in our way of the world. So, money, funding, that's what they're spending. I wanna put it out there, everybody who doesn't know, November one, ten, the ballot twenty, twenty-eight, oh nine, they're trying to be forty million dollars of that away from that. Now, for anybody who knows anything about it, if you don't, that's forty million dollars that's gonna be taken away from us, putting into money, putting into situations like mental health situations, mental health care, establishing rehabilitation centers, doing other things like putting together more places like the ballot center. So, if you can put some interest into that, and put it with that too, that would also be something that would go along with this.
Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and wrap up for tonight, I really appreciate everybody standing. If you look on the screen, it says give email updates daily on events, go be follow-up information about tonight, have an announcement with e-notifications. So if you go to the city of North Bend website, the www.northbendoregon.us/notify, basically if they go to the North Bend website, they can find it. You can enter your name and email address, select the categories about which you would like to receive notices on, we send out different things on there about just information from even our city administrators reports, and not that way, and then emails of ours and South Miami, and then you can change your settings or unsubscribe at any time. So as we mentioned, we're going to have one more town hall on March sixth, I mean, we'll probably have more town halls, but the next one is on March sixth. We will be taking feedback from tonight and the previous surveys, and we'll be coming up with a draft ordinance, so please mark your calendars for March sixth, and I know we're, and we're good friends, so, thank you all, and please have a safe evening.